We had several items in closed session this evening with regard to item one, number one, a conference with real property negotiators. The city of Lompoc has received an unsolicited proposal for the exchange of a piece of privately held property for a parcel of city property. The council instructed the staff to investigate this and come back with a report at a future council session, open session, to discuss it and so we can look at all the issues regarding it. With regard to item number two, which was conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation, instruction was given to staff on two cases. And with regard to the third item, which involves... Can I say it? Okay. I look right and left when we come to one of these things because I act on instructions of the council when it comes to these things. This involves the Lompoc Housing Community Development Corporation and the situation with them. We did not reach the end of our discussion on that, and after the open session is completed, we'll be back discussing that some more. The public should know that this council met early in the year, and I'm sorry, I don't have the exact date, but I believe it was in January, and received briefings from the staff with regards to LH CDC. The council reached a decision and gave staff instruction. Acting on those instructions, the staff proceeded and provided frequent updates to the council on the ongoing things, which I think you've probably all read about in the newspaper. And unfortunately, very recently, there was a change which we had not expected, and therefore it's back on our plate again. So... And that's, I think, everything. Yes? Yes, good. Okay. And now the invocation. Doug? Uh-oh. That looks like a tag. God, as a council and a people, we find ourselves in trying times. We are in some of the more difficult times in the history of our country, and we ask for your guidance and help for this council in making good decisions and for our community in working with those decisions. Also today, we would like to remember all those who were killed on September 11th. Thank you. I'm in. Sorry. And if you would join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic whose name is one nation, united, visible with liberty and justice for all. Presentations made elsewhere. On September 2nd, I presented a proclamation of employer support for the Amgen Reserve Week, which was mailed to the California Employer Support Unit for the Garden Reserve in Los Angeles. And this evening, I have two other proclamations which are not listed, but if you will indulge The first proclamation I will be presenting tomorrow, and it's a proclamation of Constitution Week for 2011. Whereas September 17th, 2011 marks the 224th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitution Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuance of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, John H. Lind, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim September 17th to the 23rd, 2011, to be Constitution Week in Lompoc, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution. The city administrators, executive directors, staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor, council, audience and viewers, while there are no staff's reports tonight, staff agendized under staff requests and announcements, application information related to the city hosting a stage start for the Amgen Tour of California. Provided for council's consideration is the attached Amgen Tour of California application material. Included in this material are key facts, a history and overview, as well as the responsibilities of a host city and the required formation of a local organizing committee. The host city is required to help the local organizing committee raise money, promote and market the city, and promote tourism. Also outlined are the host city obligations to help provide the tour with certain expenses, city services, and other obligations to ensure the successful organization of the tour. I would at this time turn this matter over to council for discussion and consideration. However, Mr. Mayor and council members, I would respectfully note that while hosting the Amgen Tour of California cycling event would most likely put Lompoc on the map and from which Lompoc would realize economic benefit, upon staff's cursory review of the attached information, the commitment is significant, and coupled with a short turnaround for completing an application to host a stage start, staff would recommend council possibly consider submitting an application to host the, possibly the 2013 or 2014 Amgen Tour, allowing sufficient time for planning this very prestigious event. And so at this time, I'll turn discussions and consideration over to the mayor and council. Thank you.
Thank you. And who got there first? Councilor Martin.
I guess I need to clarify and understand what you're asking us for actually to take action, whether we should submit an application. Is that what you're asking?
This is the request and submittal and consideration that you would be taking at this time, reviewing the material and whether to direct staff to submit an application for the 2011 Amgen Tour.
Okay. So you're asking for directions. So basically, this council has to vote and decide whether we will submit an application or not. Correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Costin.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. If the council would indulge, I would appreciate if we allowed the opportunity for two of the folks in the community who have taken a key role in this to come up and speak shortly on that, if they are comfortable with doing that. That would be Mr. Ken Ostini from the Chamber of Commerce and also Ms. Judy Taggart. Would you be okay with coming forward and just saying a few words?
Come on down, you guys.
Ken Ostini, City of Lompoc, Chamber of Commerce. Yes, we've met a couple of times, a small committee of folks to talk about the possibility of hosting a kickoff leg of the Tour of Amgen. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of commitment from a lot of folks. Myself, I really don't feel like we're really ready to do that yet. I haven't seen the commitment of people to do that, and we definitely have no commitment for money, and if the money's not there, the city's in liable for that. And I know the city doesn't have extra money to pay for this. So I think what I heard in the recommendation from the city administrator is that it'd probably be best if we kind of regrouped and looked at maybe trying to do this next year. I think it's a great event, and I think it'd be a great thing for Lompoc, but I'm just not sure we're ready to do that this year. So that's my thought on that.
Judy Tag.
Okay. Oral communications. Your opportunity to address us for five minutes on any subject.
Carol Benham, Lompoc resident. Good evening, mayor, city council. Lompoc Housing and Community Development Corporation. In the beginning, this group accomplished some good things. I want to publicly acknowledge that. But somewhere along the line, it got off track, and now it's completely derailed. The partnership with Cabrillo Economic Development was the last option on the table. Now LH CDC has voted that down, and the speculation is they intend to dissolve. So begins what I can only imagine will be a legal quagmire that could last for months or years. HUD, excuse me, HUD told me they thought the ball was in the county's court. HUD's liaison, Community Enterprise Partners, said it was waiting to see what LH CDC was going to do. The county appears to be blindsided by the end of discussions and tells me they feel like they're back to square one. I think the ball, I'd like to put the ball in your court. I'm sure your legal counsel has given you advice on your options, but I'll suggest one action you could take now, and that is to put an RFP out for services for the homeless. There's a clear precedent for this. The city put an RFP out for food distribution because it had questions about the viability of the former Lompoc Food Pantry. It put out the RFP very quickly, within 90 days, and it did so when the Food Pantry was still providing services and had a positive balance sheet after raising $36,000 from the community. So we're coming up to winter, and the question of viability is far greater for LH CDC than it ever was for the Food Pantry. That is an option I hope you'll consider. There's another option to consider, and that is that eventually there has to be an independent audit of LH CDC. Why not ask the DA to convene a grand jury with its powers of subpoena, or take some legal action to retrieve the records? Or ask HUD to send in the inspector general and conduct a forensic audit of what happened to the missing records and the millions of dollars of public funds? I want you to know that HUD volunteered the information to me about the inspector general. It was nothing that had occurred to me and nothing I was asking about. So I assume they wanted local officials to know, as well as the general public, that that option exists. I urge you not to wait for the other parties to act. No other party in this mess is affected more than the city of Lompoc. The properties are in our town from one end to the other. The blight affects the entire town, and the substandard conditions affects the tenants. And you've seen photographic evidence of that blight, of the substandard conditions, of the violations of health and safety codes, and how poorly tenants have been treated. The people on this dais tonight, all of you, or I should say, none of you, were the people who allowed this group to play by a different set of rules for many, many years. You aren't the ones who turned a blind eye to financial audits not being filed since 2006. You aren't the ones who looked the other way when mandated compliance reports for the affordability covenants weren't filed year after year after year. You aren't the ones who kept funding them anyway. But you are the ones who have to clean it up. Please don't let this mismanaged mess drag on for months or years. Take some action to let the city clear this train wreck off the tracks so we can move forward. Thank you.
Terry Hammons, Lompoc. Well, I've been following this for a while, and it hasn't gotten any better over the years, and I believe it's going to get worse unless something is done fairly quickly because there are people in jeopardy that probably have been exploited for quite some time by this corporation. Their housing is in jeopardy. They're sometimes, maybe their very existence in this community. They may have to be moved somewhere if this does not take place. I'm kind of ashamed that the city of Lompoc is in this position because it doesn't fare well with what we really want to do about our community. We pride ourselves in this community, but we have eyesores that this corporation was allowed to maintain and keep. Two of the most egregious, well, many egregious things are the South Eight Street buildings. I just can't believe that it's been going on for years and years and years, and no one has quickly said, "Those need to come down. They need to get out of there. They need to be taken away." And it didn't happen. The legal process is not that slow. I mean, you can say, "Well, we have to do this, and we have to do that, and we might have to go to court, and we have to do that." Well, we really haven't moved that quickly on this at all. Now, I see a different light to this also. If we had been doing proactive code enforcement, possibly, I'm not saying that it would have changed anything, but if possibly, it could have changed. And that is that the current process we have requires people to file a complaint. Now, the very people that are exploited would be those, that would be required to file those complaints. Well, how does that happen? Most people who are exploited are not going to come forward and say, "Oh, I don't have any running water. I don't have any hot water. I don't have heating. I don't have this. I don't have that. My floor is falling in." They're not going to report those things if they're living in exploited conditions. And most often, those people are exploited, and this landlord has been the exploiter. Now, we're, go back to this proactive. If code enforcement had been able to go through these particular areas that this landowner owned, to see that there was compliance, possibly it wouldn't have got as bad as it is. Now, I think the council needs to look at code enforcement in this city, a real hard look at it, and say, "Where do we want to go with this?" We're talking about Amgen in 2012 or 2013. Well, what are we going to do? Are we going to have a complaint-driven process that's going to take care of the problems that are out there now? Probably not. Probably not. It will take the city to prepare for Amgen. A code enforcement program that identifies problems... Well, I'll give you an example. There's an automobile that sits on the corner near a public school in this city. This automobile was put there with a tarp over it, with a broken wheel. It was pulled out into the grass area, and it has sat there for almost three months. Anybody can drive along one of the main streets that goes north and south, and you can see that vehicle sitting on the grass area. I would bet that there has not been one complaint about that vehicle. Now, that shows you how complaint-driven things are. You can check on this vehicle. You can drive up and down one of the eastern streets on that side, and you can see this vehicle sitting out there on the grass. You can check to see if the code... Anyway, thank you very much.
Thanks, Terry.
Jan Martinez, Lompoc. I was here three years ago. It was a different council for the most part, and I had a petition signed by several of the downtown businesses and residents concerning the same thing that we've just been talking about, and I completely agree with what the last speaker's had to say. I live in a downtown, and I've been making some effort to take care of some properties that aren't mine. I just feel like we've been held hostage, in a way, by this group. And I agree, it is time. It is time for you to do something, and it wasn't something that you had control over, but unfortunately, you are going to have to take care of it because it is about credibility for our city. And when I hear about wanting to invite, you know, Amgen, I think, how exciting. And I also agree with Mr. Lingel that when I have people in my house, we do have to clean it up, and it is time to do that first, but I think we can do that. It is doable. There might be some fallout from that, might make some very unhappy people somewhere, but we have to do that. It's time. And I'm asking you to please do whatever you have to do, and as Mrs. Benham suggested, if we have to call in other resources to do that, to support that, then let's do that. I want to be in a city that we can be proud of, and I see properties on prime location, H and Ocean, that, you know, they're a mess, and that's what people see when they come in here. It's first impressions. It's always about that, and we can do something about that. And yeah, there's accountability, and I don't know really how deep this goes as far as this group, but I really believe that it has to be looked into. And say, three years ago, I was here. I did that because it's very important to me about how things look in our city, and I know it's important for everyone else. And cleaning things up is one of the most doable things we can do. It doesn't take that much, maybe another city cleanup, to do that part, some more resources that would be available, but I'm asking you to do this and be the council that we elected to do this, to have the leadership that we haven't seen. And I think everyone would be really, really appreciative of that. So we can start inviting people in and being proud of our town. That's just what we want, and thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak?
Kate Griffith. I'm speaking now as a former economic development professional for the city, and I'd just like to request or really let the council know how important it is to give your next economic development professional a fair shake by getting rid of LH CDC. When I moved to town in 2002 to take on the responsibilities, LHC was just beginning to segue into economic development by the purchasing commercial properties in the old town, the corner of H and Ocean. And, you know, I was watching and trying to collaborate, but they weren't interested, even though I was a city's economic development professional. And by 2004, I was really concerned because there were financials that weren't being made available, the due diligence that just seems natural or what should be considered standard business procedure was being neglected. I found that other, some of my colleagues at City Hall, including the former city attorney and former city councilperson Jan Keller and former fire chief, Linial White, they all had concerns also. But every time any of us would raise these issues, we'd be taken to task or brow-beaten and basically told not to be meddling with the sacred cow that was LH CDC. And unfortunately, what we were, all the signs that we were seeing back beginning in 2004 for me, and I think others may have seen it earlier, it has all come to fruition. You know, we have this organization that is now millions and millions of dollars, the city has laid out millions and millions of dollars, and some of it still will never be recouped, unfortunately. But it's really important to close this chapter with this organization as soon as possible if you want your new economic development director to be able to do her job. And that means let's move forward with downtown commercial development with serious developers and not a nonprofit that's masquerading as a commercial developer. At the time, back in 2002, 2003, 2004, there weren't serious developers that were interested in our old town, but they couldn't touch it because everything that was being purchased was basically allowed to be purchased by LH CDC with all the blessings of the city administrator, city council, with the exception of Jan Keller, who I know was very, very opposed to their acquisitions of properties. But as I was looking through some of my notes today, you know, some of my old records, and I'm just saddened. It's a travesty what's been allowed to happen because some of us saw it and tried to put the brakes on it back in 2004. And now we are in, you know, years later, 2011, and it's everything that, it's the worst nightmare we could possibly imagine. So council, please take action and whatever, and thank you very much, Carol Benham, for bringing these issues to the public and, you know, forcing everyone to acknowledge what has been basically swept under the rug for too many years now. And I think it's, the saddest part of it is, is that this organization basically bamboozled a lot of really good-hearted people, people with great intentions in Lompoc, and convinced them that they were going to do things that they really didn't have the capability of doing. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Arlen Seacrest. Gophers, Ryan Park. You know, if the city, and I don't know exactly when they did finish working on that, trying to get rid of the gophers down there and smooth it out, but if they'd have been there at 5:00 in the morning and it had been perfect, by the time those dogs showed up, the gophers would have been back in the holes. It's that bad. Now, last week, we had a group of volunteers, they were parolees, but they were volunteers down at River Van Park, applying poison down there the whole week. There was 12 of them. They were back there today, working on it again, along with the city crew, and they were applying dirt down there again, trying to get that leveled out so we can start these soccer games that are coming up and tournaments. With speaking of bringing money to town, those tournaments flat bring a lot of dollars in. They stay here overnight, they eat, they buy the gas and everything else like all the other people that come to town. But at any rate, what they were doing down there today was applying the dirt, and they set that lawnmower dead down on as low as it would go, trying to plane it off to get it all even. It's that rough down there, and that's a relatively new field. And I ran into a coach over the weekend, it was down there, doing the same thing with about five volunteers. He bought, there was dirt piled there for him, he had a front loader to move it around, and was applying that down there. And he was saying then that it was too rough to play on. And he was saying then that it was too rough to play on. So I called Cindy, the urban forester, at about 4:30. She went down and looked at it, called me back, and said, "Well, Arlen, we're going to get down there and take care of that with the city crew this week," and that's what they're doing. But it's not going to last, there's that many gophers in the area. So we really need to get hold of that piece of equipment that the legislators should get off their dime and vote for. But I just wanted to back up this thing that that city crew, you know, were working on that part, but you've got to remember, there's only about six or seven of them down there doing it. So we need more help. And when we get that piece of equipment, I expect some volunteers from the city council to help because there's hoses there that we can put down in a hole, and all of you walk so that you can help out. Thank you.
I am prepared to become the gopher mass murderer of Lompoc. And on that subject, I spoke to our senator's office last week in Sacramento. The gopher gas bill, which is AB 634, had passed all the committees and was parked on the senate floor to be voted on. There was no opposition. I didn't look today, but I surely hope they passed it today. So we're that close.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Joyce Howerton, Lompoc. I was sitting back there, listening to some of the speakers talking about LHCDC, and I was remembering over 10 years ago when Jan Keller, who sat where you're sitting now, Councilwoman Jan Keller, asked many times when LHCDC came to the city for money that she wanted to see an audit. And every time, they smiled, and it was usually a four-to-one vote in favor of LHCDC. This has gone on for years. So you have Jan Keller, who's on the city council. You have a planning commissioner who literally took the time to go out every month to check property and report back on the condition it was in and the concerns that they had. You had people after people raising issues and raising concerns. And here we are today, years later. You know, it makes me think of Bell, California. People go, "Gosh, how could that ever happen? How could that have been allowed to happen?" And yet today in Lompoc, we have people who are talking about going to the grand jury, we have people who are talking about going to the district attorney, and we have people who are talking about suing the city for misuse of public funds. I mean, this is a very serious issue. And when you talk to people over the years, they'll tell you, "There's nothing we can do. It's coming out of the supervisor's office. There's nothing we can do. It's coming out of the mayor's office." Time and time again, it appears that there's always been somebody there to push it away, hide it, make it, you know, disappear. But it's not going to go away this time. And I'm sorry that you're sitting up there now, and you're the ones that are going to have to deal with it, but I'll tell you, you had better deal with it because there are a lot of very angry people in this community. This is a community of very limited funds, and when we look at the hundreds of thousands of dollars that isn't accounted for, it is just shocking. But you want to know what's the really shocking thing about this? This organization formed and is supposed to serve the needs of the poorest of the poor. We're talking about women and children and men who have no home, who have no food, they have no hope. And all the money that was put into this organization was to help this group of people move forward. So not only do we have a scandal, and I mean a scandal, on our hands, we have a lot of needy people out there whose needs were not met. And I think that's the most shameful thing of all. Thank you.
I'm absolutely certain, when you said the mayor's office, you weren't looking at Just wanted to clarify that, in case I'd missed something. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Ken Ostini, Lompoc Valley Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau and Lompoc resident. On a little bit of a lighter note, I would also like to thank Councilmember Costa for her work in trying to bring the tour here this year and the council's support of giving that task to the economic development director. And I'm excited and look forward to working with that person when she gets on board to the possibility of bringing the tour here in the future because I think it's a great opportunity for Lompoc to do that. So, and again, my only objection before was the timing. A couple of things in the chamber. Our monthly luncheon, we had two weeks ago, I don't know if any of you, I don't think any of you were in attendance, but we had SpaceX, Lee Rosen from SpaceX in attendance. Fantastic presentation. What a great asset to our community. He really wants to support Lompoc and help bring some jobs here, get people to move here, live here, and be a part of this community. So it was an awesome presentation. If you haven't heard him and you have an opportunity, please do so because it's fantastic what they're going to do in Lompoc. Old Tar Market ended on the 26th. It was a good run this summer. The weather even cooperated fairly well for us this summer, so I think we had a good event, and hopefully we can improve on that again next year. And I know we can keep the farmer's market over on Cypress this year and not have to move that halfway through the program. Coming up on Thursday, the Northern Santa Barbara County Economic Forum Strategy Workshop is going to be held in Santa Maria, and I'd like to thank the mayor for providing a couple seats for chamber members. I also have four other members from the chamber coming, so I'll have seven members from the Chamber of Commerce at that forum on Thursday in Santa Maria. So excited to hear about what is going to come from that. And again, I think your economic development director is going to be there also, so that will be a great opportunity for all of us. Another exciting event coming up is the Public Safety Training Complex groundbreaking on the 13th next week. Boy, what an exciting thing for Lompoc. That's been a long time coming, but what a great opportunity for all of us. So I'm excited about that. Our strat plan was mentioned. We're in the final stages of completing our strategic plan for the chamber. I'll be taking the final plan to our full board probably later this month for approval, and at that point then, we'll be able to provide you probably copies of that strategic plan. Also, I don't know how many of you, I'm sure many of you have, and I'll take Dwayne's thunder here because he probably was going to talk about this, but the governor last week declared September California Wine Month for the seventh year running. And just some statistics, if you didn't see it in the paper today, over 20 million tourists come to California for the wine. That was the estimates they put in the paper. 20 million, that's a lot of people. Provides over 330,000 jobs in California. $18.4 billion in retail sales. Those are huge numbers. And I think our wine area and our wine ghetto area have really contributed a lot to that. I mean, we're a part of it, sure, we're not numbers anywhere like that, but I just wanted to highlight that because I think we are a big part of that, and it's a great asset to our community. So that's all I have for now. Thank you. Questions?
Any questions? None, thank you. Is anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communications. As a council, we meet and discuss things in closed session that have legal impacts. And this council has been very forthright in not going outside and talking about those things because that is what we all agreed to do. The downside to that is that sometimes it leads you to believe that we're not involved in an issue and not doing something which could not be further from the truth. But at the end of the day, we protect the city and the city's liability, and we probably don't protect ourselves quite as well, much as we might like to. But that's a decision that we've all made. So when you see us sit here not being able to comment on something, there are good reasons for it, and I would simply ask that you have your faith and trust in all of us that you helped elect and know that we are working on this issue and others. There was a question with regard to the Ruskowski Building and why that has not been torn down. We did have about two years ago, an expert come to the city and talked to the Downtown 2020 Group, and that was one of the questions that was raised. And this gal travels all over and does downtown revitalization in old towns. And she actually strongly discouraged tearing down any building, particularly one with a basement, because if one is torn down, the vacant lot usually lasts 10 years longer than reconditioning a building. And so I think that may have been why we went down that road quite some time ago. Councilmember Lingel?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just want to add one thing to your comments about us having to be silent during closed sessions. Ms. Howerton mentioned that when Jan Keller was on the council, she was at the short end of a four-to-one vote with LHCDC. I just want to mention that we do have an equivalent of Jan Keller on our council right now, Councilmember Martner. Councilmember Martner and I were elected two and a half years ago. Councilmember Martner from day one was a Jan Keller on this council, and I want to thank her for that. It took me a little bit longer, it took me probably six months or more to see her side of it, but we do have a council member on this council that has been dogging it for a long time.
Thank you, Councilmember Lingel, and I would like to say that I had to beat him over the head many times. I'm kidding, I'm really kidding. I really thank you for your support.
All right. And now, having covered that issue, and I hope to the satisfaction of those of you in the audience at home, at least to the level that we're able to, we'd surely love to say more. I'd like to move to the consent calendar. Is there, are there any items that need to be removed? And the only item I need to disclose is I will not participate in the vote for check 30612 and 30513, one for 50 bucks and one for $5, to MyLock Shop. Is there any other questions about the consent calendar? If not, I'd accept a motion to approve it. Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I seen Marty Hostler here someplace. You know, I read this report, I couldn't tell you how many times. I finally understood it, but this thing reminded me, if a train left Chicago going 120 miles an hour, what time would it get to LA? I was never good at those problems, and this report was very difficult for me. Thanks, Marty.
I'd still accept a motion to approve the consent calendar. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marylyn. I agree. I saw a new electric utility rate schedule, and I went straight to it, and I was so confused, but thank you. With that, I move that we approve the consent calendar.
I second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Is any discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. And now we have, excuse me, we have some appointments. And, and, and I've got to get on the right page. First appointment is to the Youth Commission, and that would be Sarah Correo. Sarah, are you here? Nope, Sarah's not here. Would someone care to make that appointment? I'm sorry? Now, these are at large. These are at large.
I move that we appoint Sarah Correo to the Youth Commission.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Sarah Correo to the Youth Commission. Is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. I'll get there. I just can't write as fast as you guys can talk. And the next one is a at-large term for the Oversight Committee for the Park Pool Maintenance Assessment District, Jack Rodenhay, a previous member of our Planning Commission. And I'd accept a motion for that. Councilmember Costa?
So moved.
And a second? And it's been moved and seconded to approve Jack Rodenhay, actually, his real name's John, okay, for the Planning, for the Park Pool Oversight Committee, Oversight Committee for the Park Maintenance and Pool Assessment District. And seeing no discussion, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. You moved that, right? And the next one is the Library Board of Trustees. And I don't see Marie out there. This is an appointment to replace a resignation for someone who joined the Planning Commission. This is Maria Aguniga.
Marylyn, who left the Library Board of Trustees?
The chairman left the board and is joining the Planning Commission.
What is that individual's name?
Al Clark.
Al Clark.
Okay.
Yeah. And so this is an appointment with a term ending in 2013. And I would accept a nomination for that. Councilmember Lingel?
I move that we nominate Maria.
Aguniga.
Aguniga. To the term of the Library Board of Trustees.
And a second?
I'll go in second.
Okay. And is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. And the next one is an appointment for the Public Safety Commission. And I'm sorry, whose appointment is this?
It's my appointment. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. John Healy, who left the Public Safety Commission due to personal affairs. And I am appointing Mr. Bradley Damschroeder, who is not here tonight, but he's very eager to join the commission and has a lot of good ideas in trying to bring some resolution to the severe understaffing that we have, both primarily in the fire department.
Okay, is there any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, I need a second for that.
I'll second.
And, thank you. And is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. And that is all the appointments. Oh. Yeah, this is item number five. Okay, this is an appointment to the county representative, alternate to the Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control District. And, no, sorry, rewind. There's public comment on all of these appointments. Did anybody want to speak on any of those? No? Okay, good. Now, Dirk, go.
Yeah, what I wanted to do was go ahead and resign my position as the alternate on the Air Pollution Control District. Sometimes I find it very inconvenient for me to be down there on a Wednesday afternoon on the rare time that the primary person can't make it. And simplicity for me would be to go ahead and relinquish my appointment, go ahead and ask John, Marylyn, to take it because it follows the SB CAG so that if I am never available, I did have to miss one because I had a prior, Councilmember Martner was out of town, called away very suddenly. See, we were left unrepresented that day down there. I would like to go ahead and resign and go ahead and nominate Marylyn to go ahead and take the alternate position.
Councilmember Martner?
I would like to nominate Councilmember Costa as the alternate.
Marylyn, reviewing the appointments, I just noticed that, you know, to be quite frank, my load is essentially the Community Action Commission, and so, you know, I have more than enough room to take on an alternate position. If it was the primary, I probably wouldn't be comfortable with that, but as the alternate, I have more than enough time. I have more than enough time. Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck?
I will go ahead and rescind my nomination of Mary Lynn.
I don't care, so let me just say that the reason that he was nominating me was, I'm already there, and so that's the advantage to having me. But if you'd love to do it, I'd love to have you. Actually, I think we have to, no, there's only one alternate allowed, and that was what we found out the last time. I was already there, Councilmember Martner was out of town, Councilmember Starbuck couldn't go, and I was sitting there and couldn't represent us, because we're only allowed to have a primary and an alternate.
I understand that, and that was only one time.
Yeah.
When I was out of the country because of family affairs. But, you know, it's not about just being there, it's about studying the issues, it's about holding a position on the issues and so forth. So the convenience of just being there, I don't think is enough to really nominate somebody. Councilmember Costa has shown an interest to get involved with what it takes to be in that commission, so I very much welcome that involvement.
So therefore, we need a second.
I'll go ahead and second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Councilmember Costa as the alternate to the APCD Board. Is there any discussion? And I would take public comment on that. Does anybody out there wants to talk about this? Seeing no one rise, we'll come back. And seeing no one's light lit, we'll vote. And that passes 5-0. Okay, our next item will be item number skit, number six, discussion regarding a possible single-purpose committee to review the future uses of the old municipal tool. Pool! Pool! It's been a tough tongue night. By Management Services Director Brad Wilkie. Brad?
This item was a request by the council either the last meeting, the meeting before that. And one of the requests that the council had was to not have staff report, and I tried to abide by that request, and instead of creating a whole brand-new staff report, I just summarized and included a staff report that was done for a similar committee to give you an outline of what the things are that you might want to consider if you want to consider this as a single-purpose committee. That second staff report that's included here would give you a good ability to have a discussion on this particular item in these circumstances. And I will leave it up to you.
All right. And bring it back to the council for preliminary discussion, then we'll have public comment. Councilmember Martner?
I have just a small comment. So however, any potential final recommendations for the disposition of the facility may have a fiscal impact to the city. It will have a fiscal impact to the city. It's city property, isn't it? It's not may.
Correct. The magnitude, low, high, we just wouldn't be able to tell.
But it will have a fiscal impact. Correct? Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I've been told that that sound is very obnoxious, so I'm sorry for all those at home who hear that noise. So really quickly, I wanted to say that I was really excited that we've done some work and figured out that our single-purpose committee structure works. I think that, you know, we can all agree that that worked well, and that was exciting. This actually isn't a question for staff, this is just a concern, and maybe staff can address it, possibly not. But again, my, my biggest concern is that it will have a fiscal impact. So, again, when we're talking about penciling out, Councilmember Starbuck, as you mentioned earlier, to do anything with the pool, it's going to cost money. And so we need to make sure that if we want to establish the single-purpose committee, that this has to be a priority, and this has to be a point of focus for our council, and we have to agree on that. And the other thing I wanted to make sure we all kept in mind is that we're appointing an Economic Development Commission, as we agreed, and that was actually my question for staff, is do we have an idea when that will be coming to council, or when we'll be getting that process started?
Councilmember Costa and Mayor and Council, you could anticipate this to be one of the first things that our Economic Development Director brings to you in one of the future council meetings within, you know, a month or two.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with the concern about the economic impact of the city with something we do with this, the old municipal pool. However, going back to our previous discussion on the Amgen tour, it may take a little money to make a little money. There's a possibility that the recommendations from the single-purpose committee may be to invest an amount of money into a project that could generate revenue in the city, and that's something that I'd like to, you know, see if this committee comes up with, something that generates possible money to the community. And that, that's a possibility.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, one of the things, you know, the single-purpose committee that went in to look at planning, one of the most expensive things that they recommended was the remodel of the City Hall lobby. And we agreed that that was very unfeasible to do at this time. I think that the purpose of the single-purpose committee to evaluate the pool is not to go ahead and obligate money to do it, but to find what we want to do. We don't have to do it right away, but if we have a determination on what to do, then at least we know what we'll have to do. And I really, the only fiscal impact that I see would be, you know, a small amount of staff time, and then some, you know, admin-type paper things for these people that are going to sit on this committee if we decide to do it.
Councilmember Martner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I remember that we talked about this at one point in time, about the pool, and it was something to tear it down, it would be, I heard some exorbitant amount of money, like million-plus to just tear it down. So, so, you know, I, I understand the idea of a single-purpose committee. Again, I think Councilmember Costa is right, we need to set priorities. Are we going to, is this going to be a priority? Or is the Lompoc Theater going to be a priority? Or is Amgen going to be a priority? Or is what else going to be a priority? We hear constantly, you know, the, you know, making the aquatic center be a bigger thing. What is our priority? We have limited resources, we have limited monies, and I keep going back to the strategic thing. What is it that we're going to do? So, you know, I will support you if you think that you have volunteers that want to do this and look at it, and, and that's fine, and it can come back to the council, but then I am going to be sitting there going, great idea, but we don't have the money, you know? And, and we just kind of go back into that kind of cycle, so we're kind of caught up in this thing, you know? We bring up ideas, and then we go back, well, we don't have money. We still have not been able to focus and say, this is what we're going to do, this is what we're going to spend our money in. I believe that the pool is part of code enforcement, as far as I can tell, because it looks like hell, right? So maybe it needs to go under code enforcement and pull some money that way. So it's, I will support if you have volunteers that would, you know, spend the time and use a minimum amount of the stuff, but I want to put it in the bigger context, and that is, well, what is the council going to do with the recommendations?
Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, when we say priorities, obviously, this would be a low priority when you come, when it comes to things like economic development, code enforcement, getting the aquatic center, getting the community center going, the aquatic center dehumidifiers in, those are, well, public safety, those are all top priorities. This would have a priority, but it'd be a very low priority. I think every one of us have been asked multiple times, what is happening with that aquatic center? And all I can say is, nothing. I mean, we're not doing anything with it. So at least if we have this committee, and I want to compliment Councilmember Starbuck for bringing it to the attention, if we have this committee, they'll come to us with some suggestions as what could possibly be done. And I guarantee you, if it's going to cost any money, it'll be a very low priority. Tearing it down, you said a million dollars, I had heard 500,000, doesn't really matter. We don't have the money to tear it down at this point. I think we're using it for storage right now, which is a use, I guess. But at least we'll have something to say that we have, we are not just putting a blind eye to it. We are concerned about it, we know it's a concern, it's a public facility, and these are possible uses for it when money becomes available. There was a cartoon in the paper the other day, and I was kind of offended, because I thought it was a good idea, make it into a big skate park, but I guess the cartoon in the newspaper didn't like it. But anyway, I'm in favor of at least taking a look at it and having some people tell us what the community thinks of it.
Okay, let's take a break and see if we have anyone who would like to have public comment on this. Anybody out there who want to talk about this issue? There we go, seeing a couple of you, come on down.
I'm still Carol Bingham, still a Lompoc resident. I think it's a great idea. I learned how to swim in that old pool eons ago, and we see it every day driving by. I think, Councilmembers Martner, Councilmembers Martner, I'm saying that wrong, but you know what I'm getting at here? Your concern is valid, we really don't have money, and the priorities aren't always clear. But to let a committee of volunteers in the community begin to look at the possible uses, I think at least advances us from the point where people disagree whether it could be, has to be recreation, or has to be that, or has to be that, and we haven't gotten anywhere. I think it's a great idea. If I wasn't already on a commission, I'd volunteer.
Thank you.
George Bedford, Lompoc resident. I remember when I was growing up, my grandfather used to buy and sell cattle all the time. And he, and he, when we got to the stockyard one time, they had a picture up on the wall of a cow that was developed by committee. And it didn't look much like a cow. And I'm thinking, you know, you're putting a group of people together to try to make a decision on a very expensive piece of equipment over there, and, you know, you could hire a realtor, have them put a really, really, really good-looking for-sale sign on that thing, and it was spruce it up and show what we really need to do with it. We, we can't afford that pool, we can't afford, like Cecilia said, we can't afford to even tear it down. What are we going to do with it? You guys are coming up all these ideas, a skateboard park, you know, Bob brought back the aquatic center. We already have one of those that were on the other end of town. But sell it, or at least put that out there as an option for that pool. That's all I'm saying. Don't, don't, don't make it the committee's decision that this is what we want to do, or these are the choices we have. Give them all the choices. Open the box up. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak? Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communication, and I will impart upon you one piece of information, which is that that is parkland donated to the city, and we apparently couldn't sell it, but there are those rather long 58-year leases that we've been told about, so that would be a viable alternative. I've lost track. Councilmember Starbuck?
It's not only parkland, it is public use on the deeding.
I stand corrected, or added to. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. And I'm not trying to say that I don't think something should be done, because, yeah, I really think that that's an awful reflection of City Hall, that it's right out front and it's used for storage. I really am not satisfied with that. But I think that when we're talking about, you know, a 24-hour bike tour pass-through and a city facility, we're comparing apples and oranges. I'm afraid that this facility would become something else that the city has to pay to build and to subsidize. Most city facilities that are not office buildings, you're going to have to pay to subsidize somehow. We haven't figured out how to make something that revenue generating yet, so I'm a little fearful that we wouldn't be able to do it in this case as well. My other concern, and what I heard was that the teardown was over 1 million, the retrofit was 500, around 500,000. So even if we don't tear it down and we do something with it, we're still having to pay to retrofit it, or at least that's the information that we were given previously, which would be 500,000. So now that takes me to, okay, let's get this committee started now for something that could happen, or could take quite a while, it could happen down the line. And that, at that point, I, I'm actually in somewhat of an agreeance, but I'm a little concerned, because, for example, the downtown specific plan was made quite a many years ago, and that was something that the city was supposed to put a lot of money into, and it hasn't come to full fruition yet years and years later. So clearly somewhere along the line, that priority got lost, because it was so low of a priority. So my fear is, we already have low priorities that we're, we're still not funding and we're still not focusing on, so to add something else to the list, not that it's a bad item to add, and not that I don't want to add it, that's just sort of my concern, and I was curious to think what, or to hear what council had to say. Thank you.
I guess I would say, I like the, I think the single-purpose committee idea worked very well for what we recently used it for. In fact, I think it was excellent, and I think that the staff and the committee worked together well and developed viable strategies. I've read cover to cover the two engineering reports on the structure, and I clearly understand the issues involved. I don't think I understand the costs involved with those issues yet, and I would expect the committee to come back with a, in a general sense, what those retrofit costs would be in this environment, and make a list of, of alternate uses. If there were a way to lease it out and put it on a long lease, and somebody else to spend the money and cause it to become a public benefit, I certainly wouldn't, would be willing to look at that. I think more than anything else, what we need to do is to have some alternatives, rather than have it sit there for another seven years, and not make any, at least any effort to try to figure out how to solve the problem. So I'm fully in support of carrying this forward. I believe that the process that the other committee used, where each council member appointed someone, was a good process. And I think it would be a good opportunity for us to weigh some options, and realizing that we want a little out-of-the-box thinking on this, then we can structure who we appoint to it to get those things done. I think it's a good idea, and it doesn't cost us anything, and at the end of the day, we might even find something that would work for free. That would be good. Who else has a word? Nope? Okay, I'd accept a motion. Councilmember Costa? Or did you want to speak?
Mary Lynn, I'm actually going to make a quick comment. You know, I agree with you that if they come up with some, something out of the box, I love that, I think that that would be great. And so that's probably the only reason why I'm willing to go forward with a single-purpose committee. My only condition would be that this, there is a, a time finish, so that, or I guess, a date certain that this committee will be concluded, just like we did with our first single-purpose committee. I would hate to see it to just continue like a regular commission. So with that requirement, I would be in favor. Thank you.
Yeah, that was my understanding, that the structure of this would be basically the same as the structure of the, that we used before, and the staff would come back with, with a recommendation. Councilmember Martner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, it's clear that we cannot sell the property. It's not clear, but it looks like that maybe we cannot lease it. So the single-purpose committee is going to have to come up with some idea that we do something with it with basically monies from the city. And, you know, I think the only way, I mean, it's fine if they want to come up with ideas, as we have discussed, it's going to be low priority. I hope that they don't have the expectations that there is going to be a higher priority than that. And I would just take it, it's going to be public input, it's going to be public participation in the government, and that's a good thing. So I will support it in those spaces. That is good to hear, some public participation in what should happen. What the outcome is going to be, it's going to be probably just the input that we'll get from it. But I'm willing to have the staff spend some time doing that. Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck?
I'd like to just say, you know, thank you, because, you know, like I said in the very beginning... very beginning here, you know, this has belonged to the taxpayers for over 55 years, and I think it's important that they at least get a decision on what happens with it. The pool will not go away. It's going to be there. It may fall away one day if we don't do something with it. Maybe that would be what we decide. I don't know. But I appreciate everybody at least taking a good look at it. It is our neighbor right behind us.
I'm still looking for that motion.
I guess I will make the motion that we establish a single-purpose committee to review future uses of the Old Municipal Pool with a deadline associated with it, I guess.
And that that would come back as a staff report, correct? And a second?
I'll go ahead and second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. And now moving to item number seven. And Council, Mayor Protem Lingle will be taking over. And I do wish to give testimony as an individual, so you may call me back when the time is appropriate.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Starbuck, you have to let the folks know why you're leaving.
We're leaving, well, I'm leaving. We're bored. We're leaving because we are involved in property within 500 feet of the proposed, the current site, the current, current proposed site of the Transit Center in the parking lot between H and I adjoining Cypress.
I have interest within a couple of feet of Marilyn's interest in there, so I have to go in the lobby, too.
Okay, as we wait for them to depart chambers, we're going to be taking up item number seven, which is a review of conceptual sites for the Transit Center. And to present the staff report will be Richard Fernball.
Thank you, members of the council. Recommendation before you deny is that the council review and comment on conceptual sites for the Transit Center and provide staff with direction on preferred site location. COLK currently operates five fixed route transit services operating primarily out of a transfer center at Mission Plaza. We also operate Wine Country Express, and also at that location is the Breeze Bus Service between Lompoc and Santa Maria. The Mission Plaza Transfer Center is too small to accommodate more than two buses at a time. It lacks many of the amenities passengers would like to have, including overhead shelter and space for other transportation services. The ideal location is a larger facility that can support all transportation services and can serve as a centrally located common point for improved time transfers between transfer services in the city. In 2008, Doc and Engineering was hired to provide consulting services to identify sites for such a transfer center, and they completed a long-range ridership forecast that also included size of buses that we would use and other amenities. We identified 16 sites locally and evaluated all of sites, finally settled on the six top sites, which are in front of you tonight. And after that, they held stakeholder meetings with property owners, members of the public, open public meetings, business leaders, et cetera. Primary sites before you tonight, although there are six up there, the Aviation Drive and North Oak property is not available. It is, it is only available for aviation uses. It was purchased with FAA money. The El Camino School location is not being considered now because it has been retained by the school district for use. And the Theater Block location is considered an entry to the downtown area, and therefore should be available for commercial uses. Each location was ranked through an evaluation matrix, and in addition to that, other meetings were held with the general public and others that were interested in this project. We also met with the Chamber of Commerce's Development Task Force and got input from that group. February 16, 2010, council gave approval for a new Old Town Transit Center at the intersection of Cypress and I for purposes of preparing environmental studies. The Old Town site now has been completed, has completed environmental document, preliminary design is complete, and staff is ready to authorize the completion of final design should council wish. However, staff received direction from council at their February 15 meeting to not move forward with a conditional use permit application and return to council at a later date with site comparison information of the Old Town site and other previously reviewed sites. Previously, the city is designing a new transfer center as a top priority for the public transportation element in the city and for Proposition 1B, which was passed in 2008 by the voters for transit purposes. The Transit Center is estimated to be a $1.375 million project. Prop 1B is slated to provide the city with about $3.1 million in funding. To date, the city has received approximately $900,000 of that. Money from Prop 1B is secured through the sale of bonds by the state, and as we all know, that's been relatively hard to do lately, so that's been a slow process, and we expect it to be probably another three to five years before the money's accumulated to do this project wherever it may be with Proposition 1B funds. To date, the city has expended $124,000 in Transportation Development Act funds to evaluate sites and complete the environmental studies and design the Old Town Transit Center site. There is no general fund fiscal impact associated with direction to further study additional sites. However, additional TDA funds used for this process would decrease the amount of maintenance funds available to the Streets Division. In conclusion, it is requested that after reviewing the conceptual sites, council provide staff with direction to proceed with an individual site or provide alternative direction with This is a view of the conceptual drawing for the downtown site. You'll notice that we have added additional, additional parking area here to recover some of the parking lost in this area. Should be noted that a lot of the parking in this area, probably 80% of it right now, is taken up by people riding the Clean Air Express to Santa Barbara and Galleta each day. So they basically sit there all day and don't provide any economic activity to the downtown area. This is a site on Laurel, the old Train Depot site, I believe. You'll notice that this has areas on both ends that could be developed into parking to provide onsite parking for transit services such as Clean Air Express that are downtown at this time. And this is the area on G Street by North Avenue, fronted on the west by H Street. This is partially a use of city right-of-way, current city right-of-way, and then also use of property that would need to be purchased for additional parking area for buses. One of the challenges with this location is that to provide any off-street parking, we may have to enter into an agreement with a nearby property owner for use of parking facilities for any overflow parking. That's my presentation at this time.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Councilmember Lingle. The one question I have is, you know, you may not know for sure, but why did the private council choose this location in downtown? Was it based on staff recommendation, or was there any, you know, major component that made them choose the downtown location?
Yes, all the locations were evaluated on the list of criteria that are on the rating schedule here. It scored highest based on a number of things, such as there's already a parking ride in that area. Clean Air, excuse me, Clean Air Express already uses this area along Cypress. There is a property here is owned by the Redevelopment Corporation and would be a free transfer to the city, so the site itself would not cost us anything. Other sites would have a cost to their, that we've looked at, would have a cost to their purchase by the city. It also is central to downtown. One of the comments we always get from Taco Bell, Albertson's, the other businesses out of Mission Plaza, are the numbers of people that we bring through that area every day. And they do not just get off and on the bus there, but they also utilize that area for the shopping facilities that are there. So it has the potential to bring a lot of economic development to the downtown area.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Fernball? Then we'll open up for a public comment. And we'll invite the mayor and councilmember Starbuck back in if they want to participate in public comment.
Mayor Protem, councilmembers, staff, I'm Alice Milligan, and I live in Lompoc. First of all, I'd like to make an announcement, if I could. On September 24, we're going to honor the Lompoc Veterans Memorial Building for 75 years, our grand old lady. And I welcome the community to participate. We'll start out at 10 o'clock with proclamations, and Dennis Hedrick will do a rendition of the history of the building. And then at 6 o'clock that evening, we'll be having a dinner and speaker. And then the next day at 1 o'clock, we will have a concert, a free concert in the park by the Southwest Band, the Air Force Southwest Band. So it's going to be a nice weekend, celebrating our beautiful building that we're working hard to restore, and we welcome everyone to attend. Anyone who would like tickets, I have them. My name is in the book. Just give me a call. I'll deliver. Okay, I'm here to talk on the Transit Center. And to me, Transit Center should be a space where all modes of transportation come together. And when I look at Cypress and I Street, all it can accommodate is city buses, so that really is not a Transit Center, because all the other buses are going to be on the street or elsewhere. And so there's no space on the Cypress and I property for the Clean Air Bus, the Wine Express, the Breeze, and all the other buses that are modes of transportation in our city. So I don't consider that to be truly a Transit Center. Recently, I was in Oceanside in Escondino, and I was at both of these Transit Centers, and they, they were equipped and had space for parking for all the modes of transportation, including a train, which someday Lompoc may have a train. Who knows? We should plan for that. And so I don't see that the preferred site of Cypress and I as being a good, good location. We need to look long range and make certain that we have space to provide for modes of transportation that will be coming to Lompoc sometime in the future. And not just look at our immediate needs. We need, as I mentioned, look long range. Do not take away an excellent parking downtown area, and also a very expensive piece of property that hopefully someday will be developed into some commercial. And that's what we want. We want our downtown to expand, and if we start putting Transit Centers in our downtown, that property will not be available. I think to locate the Transit Center at Cypress and I, the preferred staff site, is the wrong thing to do. It's not looking at long range for Lompoc in the future. And I know that there's been $124,000 expended in planning, but let's not put good money after bad. It's unfortunate that that money has been spent there, but maybe someday in the future, that can be utilized since the EIR has been completed for another project. So please do not consider Cypress and I as a good location for a Transit Center, because it really won't be a Transit Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Milligan. Next.
Hello, my name's Ed Brooks, local resident. And I was asked by Morris Sabani to, on his behalf, to read a letter that he wrote regarding this subject. Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, I noticed in the newspaper that you will be considering a site for public transportation tonight at your meeting. We have a one-acre site north of the new DMV west of McDonald's. The street address is 204 West Oak Avenue. This property is paved and has over 4,500 square feet of existing building and is fenced. We would like to submit this property for your consideration. If this property is selected, the transportation, for the center, we are prepared to provide the necessary tenant improvement per your requirements and lease the property to the city. Under this proposal, city does not have to invest any funds for the property except for a monthly rental fee. Alternately, the city may wish to purchase the property at a freeze value and friendly condemnation. I'm available to discuss this property as another alternate site. Thank you. That's from Morris Sabani. And what I've handed out there is a, just a one sheet shows you the existing building that's on the site, and a plot plan showing access from Oak Avenue to that site and the location of the building.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Thank you. Next.
Bob Manning, Mayor Protem, city administrator, members of the council. I remember when a previous council that had some forethought put a parking lot where this Transit Center is proposed. The purpose of the parking lot was to bring parking to downtown. If we're going to redevelop downtown, we're going to need the parking. Not a good place for a Transit Center. So you ought to look at the other alternatives instead of that downtown parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manning.
Well, Skyler Lompoc, Mayor Protem and the council. The suggestion in the report, it said three primary sites are considered. And the first one was along East Laurel between E and A Street, the former rail station. Well, the former rail station was between G and F Street. So you're describing two separate properties there. One of the reasons the downtown site was looked at is, for many years, the city's received requests for public restrooms in the downtown area. But one of the problems that comes up with those, if they're open 24/7, is vandalism, et cetera, et cetera. So one of the thoughts was, if Transit Center was developed there, and it was a 24-hour station, that it would then have toilets available 24/7. So that property was, was taken by the city. Some people were displaced. And for future development, there was actually, originally it was supposed to all be developed into business and stuff for Lompoc. So if you're looking at other sites, when I had the pleasure of serving on the city council, I figured we needed a transportation center in the future. And I asked the city to investigate, looking from Chestnut to Laurel, between H and G Street. The corner of G and Chestnut at that time was the Asco Rental Yard, and they were moving out of that property to their new location. The Linden Building, which had the Red Warehouse on F Street and the corner there, was up for sale. The house next door on The house next door on H Street was for sale. Local attorney owns another piece there, said that he was going to retire in the near future and, you know, might entertain a sale. So could have actually, you know, picked up that time. The city administration at that time took no interest in it. My thought was that it's right alongside the rail. So you've got rail and people come to town, they don't have generally a car in their suitcase, maybe a bicycle, but they would be dropped off at the center of town right there. And it's easier for those of us that live in town to catch the train too. I can remember my wife and I took a train trip and we went over on South I Street and picked the bus up and took us out to the train. Well, we've lost that, so we don't have that service anymore. So idea there. The downtown location I thought would help the downtown develop, and I supported that in the Odd Fellas Lodge, which I'm secretary also supported it. But it is parking, it is going to be needed in the future if we never get some development going down there. So you might, if you're going to, you know, look at properties or something, might look at this other property and see what you can find. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skyler.
John Lynn, City of Lompoc, Councilmembers, Mayor Pro Tem. Just a little history on the evolution of this downtown parking lot. For several years, I served on the Downtown 2020 Committee of the Chamber of Commerce. And I didn't bring the Dayton with me, but we had a presentation from the designer of this facility. And they came to us with a quadrangle and a little building in the middle of it. And all of us there said, no, no, wait, don't, don't use up all that parking lot. That's the prime parking lot that's used by the downtown businesses and we worked so very hard to get that. And they said, no, no, this is just, this is just a preliminary drawing and we'll be back with some ideas. I served on that committee until I was elected and nothing ever came back. So we ended up here today because the downtown folks said, no, this isn't what we really want. We don't want to burn up this, our prime parking lot. But nothing ever came back. So we find ourselves looking for an alternative. Some people would say that considering rail is, is kind of silly and too far out there, but I, I happen to believe it's important. And at some point, the, the energy situation of the world will make rail transportation more viable than it is today. And it would be nice that we had looked further ahead. But having said that, I just wanted to share another alternative with the council. And this is, and I'm sorry I didn't bring multiple sets, but you can pass this down. This is aerial photographs of an outstanding transit center in San Luis Obispo next to the main library. And this transit center uses what's called sawtooth parking, where buses come in at a slight angle and they overlap, and it allows for a large number of buses to occupy a small area. What you're looking at in that photograph is roughly equal to the north side of Cypress Avenue between I and J Street. And we currently also own that, and we have a fairly large right of way there between the street with the parking and the bicycle path. And we also have the adjoining city parking lot. Someone who's a little smarter than me took a look at it and said, if we took out the first row of parking in the parking lot on the Cypress and between I and J, we would be able to accommodate identically what they have in San Luis Obispo. And that on the opposite side of that parking lot, we have the ability to reclaim 12 spaces on land that we already own. So I think the net loss for the whole project was about 20, 20 spaces in total. So there are some benefits to that. Number one, that is where the Clean Air Express currently picks up. And those larger spaces that are shown in that diagram from San Luis Obispo will accommodate the Clean Air Buses. They would also accommodate the Amtrak Buses, and they would certainly accommodate our city buses, all of which tend to run at different times so that the facility could be multi-mode. Now, the same facility with the same layout could be built at other locations in town. It could be built over next to the railroad tracks. It could be built on other streets where there's a little, we need about 20 feet of right of way behind the sidewalk that we're, that we need to acquire to use that. So we have the opportunity to put in a much smaller facility that will have buses placed closer together, so the distance between buses is shorter when people are exiting one bus and going on to the other. And we have a substantially lower cost. So there's something for you to think about. That's my story and I'm sticking to it. Thank you.
Mr. Lynn?
Sir?
Cypress I and J?
Yes, sir.
Is it a vacant lot right now?
That, that would be the, the backside of the parking lot where the swap meet is. So it would take out one row of parking in that parking lot on Cypress IJ. Would take out the row of parking adjacent to Cypress. And we would be able to add about 12 spaces on the opposite side of the parking lot in land that we currently own and actually was envisioned as additional parking in the plan for the plaza-style center.
Thank you.
Derek Starbuck, Citizen of Lompoc. A couple of things I wanted to bring up about advantages to the A through E location. One of them that's been talked about already is the train. Emery currently running about two trains a week. I don't see this going on forever up there. There's only so much dirt in the way transportation is. So there's a good chance that the city may inherit railroad railway access, and it may go up into the canyon or all the way out to Surf. It's something that could be considered and looked at. The other advantage to this site is it's the city's only access to our Type III fiber-optic cable. So this could turn into a multipurpose type of building, not only a transit center, but an actual hub for fiber optic use in the city of Lompoc later on. So this is something that we may want to look at and consider for growth later on. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Starbuck.
Mary Saladino, City of Lompoc, resident. Just one short comment as you are making your planning for wherever you decide to do this. I think some time ago, there were complaints that the tour buses that bring people to our community don't have a place to park downtown. So put that on your list of things to consider when you are making your decision about where you're going to park buses. Because the tourists that come on those big tour buses might come into our downtown area if there was a place for their buses to be accommodated. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Saladino.
Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilman, my name's Bob Holloway. You know, there's a piece of property over there behind Old Danhome Seeds, so there's a whole city block. You could come off of Third Street or you can come off of A Street. You have stoplights on Ocean Avenue at both intersections. You could make a nice, really, really nice place there, and you'd have enough room to park all the cars for the Clean Air Express. And you could even put in some restrooms and everything that could be locked up at night. And I just think that, you know, we're not in such a big hurry to do this thing, so, you know, we've already screwed up on a lot of city projects. So I think it's time that we started taking our time and figuring out what we're going to do before we do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holloway.
Sorry, Councilmember Lingel, can I, can I have him state that, what was the roadway that you suggested between Third and A?
Dr. Seaman, is this right behind the Elks Club?
Sorry, what, what's the name of the street?
It's, it's on, it would be on Walnut and Chestnut, between Walnut and Chestnut, behind Old Danhome Seeds, right there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
George Bedford again, City of Lompoc, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmembers. I was up here before talking about this project, I think back in February sometime. I may be wrong with my dates, but I was on the council when we acquired that property. And it was for doing redevelopment in the city of Lompoc. And my concern is if, if we move forward with putting this project in down there, we're basically giving up on that issue. We need open space that's accessible so we have the ability to respond to what we need to respond to as a, as a city when someone comes in with a project. And someone will be coming in with a project. I don't know when, I'm not a soothsayer, but the, the bottom line is that needs to stay a parking facility right now as it is. We have room for the Clean Air Express to park and pick up people. They come in early in the morning and they come in late at night. They're not a disturbance. When those people come in to pick up their vehicles, they spend money downtown most of the time. And, and when, if you just want to drive down there during the day, that facility that you're trying to tear up is full of cars. Where are we going to move those cars? But the, the real crux of the matter is, are we going to give up on downtown redevelopment and just have a city transit center and a city this and a city that when we have no money? If we're going to do a transit center, just looking at the project cursory, the one on Laurel looks better. Plus, we're talking about cleaning up the city, that's already a blighted area. If you want to put a transit center in, put a transit center in a blighted area and fix it up. Not put it in an area where we really need parking to look at the future of this city. And I've been here a long time and I'm still looking to the future of this city. So I'm a believer that things will happen, and I think we have a five-member council right now that have already proven they make things happen. So this is one thing I'm hoping you will not let happen, at least in this location. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bedford. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one rise, we'll bring back to council. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Councilmember Lingel. Okay, so my biggest concern here is that, how do I say this? There are so many locations in town that could be considered. And so I'm curious where we need to go next. So I feel like this, this engineering firm that we hired, I have to put some trust in what they do as a professional. So they've limited the number of properties in town down to 16. They came up with, you know, a matrix of criterion. They, they looked into each property, rated each property. So there was a very certain way of doing things that actually, to me, makes intuitive sense. So part of me says, okay, I actually, I, I trust the work that was done with this engineering firm and that we really need to focus on these three properties that were presented here in the staff report. There's another part of me that says, I can think of a property on top of my head that I'd be curious to see if it would be something that would work. And I'm thinking of the one at the very edge of town by the 246 and the 101. I, I know that's private property that's stripped of land, just running along Ocean. So, you know, and, and maybe that's not something that could work, but that's sort of my thought is I feel like there's two ways we could go here, and these are two big giant steps. One, of course, being more costly than the other. What I want to say next is if we choose to really focus on these three properties here, I appreciate Mr. Lynn's suggestion on Cypress Avenue. I wasn't concerned with that, is you'd probably only get five buses sawtoothed onto Cypress, and I don't think that that would be enough. So again, just as our previous speaker said, looking into it so far, what I like best is actually the Laurel Avenue property. It's, it's, it's open space, it, it's near a rail spur, there's more than enough room for everything that we need. Mr. Starbuck made a good point as well. So I just wanted to state, you know, I think that the three of us have to decide whether we're going to take a step back and look more generally at the town again, or if we're going to stay on this line of thought, focus on these three properties and then decide where to go with those three properties. If we choose to do that, what I prefer is looking into the Laurel Avenue location. Thank you.
Councilmember Martner.
Thank you, Councilmember Lingel. I would like to stay on the course of deciding between these three properties because the staff has spent time, we have hired an engineering firm, we went through a process. And we will always have either a private land owner that will come and say, hey, look at my property, or we will have somebody else's idea, oh, what about here, what about there? So I really don't want to go backwards. And looking at the three properties, I totally agree that the downtown area needs to be kept as a parking at this time. I've heard numerous comments from property owners in the downtown area that they actually don't want to spend money in their downtown properties because there is no parking. So, you know, filling up the little parking that we have with something else does not make sense to me. So I will leave the downtown alone as it is, and maybe will have to be developed either into a parking structure or some other type of development, but certainly not a transit center. Looking at the other two properties, I don't see anything really compelling about G Street between Pine and North. Nothing compelling about it, which really leaves me with the thought of Laurel. And I want, I guess I have the question, that's not a previous fire sta, I mean, a previous train station, is that some mistake? But the idea that it was a previous train station sounds kind of interesting because maybe it could use a little bit of like rebuilding the history of Lompoc and trying to build something that used to be there, but it's not going to be, you know, an old whatever train station. It would be a transit center. And maybe if we get into the future and we can, you know, inherit the railroad system, having access to going to Surf Beach, it would be fantastic. The number of tourists that we can bring from LA for the day, if we can get them in tr, I mean, it would be a phenomenal thing. It would be all public transit, which I'm all in support of. So at this point in time, I'm really leaning toward Laurel Avenue. They assess the former rail station, but we've been told here during the public comment that it's not the former rail station. Nevertheless, that site is the most appealing to me at this time.
Thank you. I, I agree that of the three, I'd agree with that site as well. I was going to, I was going to bring, take a step backward, as you were saying, and I was going to take a look at some of these. I was kind of intrigued by Mr. Sabani's property, especially where the city was not going to have put any, put any money forward. But we would be taking a step forward, and I believe we, it looks like we may have a consensus on the Laurel Avenue property, so.
Mr. Vice Mayor, may I just suggest that if there's a majority, if the three of you make a decision on not including the transit center being in the downtown area, make that decision, and then your two other councilmembers could come back because their, their conflict is on that property.
Okay, that's a good idea. So let's like, we'll take a vote on that then.
Well, I think maybe we need to make the motion that, I would like to make the motion that we do not consider the downtown property as a potential site for the transit center.
Okay, do we have a second?
Because I think this property needs to be left alone in order to be available for future development, I would second that.
Okay. Okay, any discussion? So let's vote on eliminating the downtown area as for consideration. And that passes three, nothing. At this point, we can call Councilmember Starbuck and the mayor back in to consider This is going to be a really short one because my primary business location is within 500 feet of the Laurel Avenue one. So I just came by to tell you that. So I just came by to tell you that because I wouldn't want to not disclose something. And here's the gavel back. Now we have a possibility of a split vote. Okay, so bringing Councilmember Starbuck up to date. At this point, we have eliminated the downtown area as consideration. We have, at this point, we can consider the Laurel Street or the Pine and North area, the other location. There's been several other locations brought forward. Mr. Sabani brought his property forward on the corner of, was that on Oaks, on West Oak? There's copyright there. Mr. Sabani would do the tenant improvements on that, and then the city would have the option of either purchasing or leasing the property. City administrator, would you, do you have, are you able to lay name off the other properties or Councilmember Starbuck that we were brought up? Can anyone bring those up?
They're in this report.
No, these are brought up by the community members.
Oh, that was yours during the public comment.
Oh, so you heard the other properties, okay.
Right, the dental property.
Okay, good. So, okay, so let's bring this back to council for discussion on anything but the downtown Councilmember Starbuck.
Thank you for having me back. I just wanted to say, I think that when, as a council, we should maybe want to think out of the box with that Laurel property, because like I said earlier during the public comment, the only access that Lompoc currently has to our Type III fiber optic cable is right there off of A Street. This is important, I think, later on. It has the ability to possibly become a future utility even. I mean, the demand for computers and high-speed internet is not going to decrease. So I just think that's a bonus to this site also. If you're going to build something, build something you can use twice.
Councilmember Costa. Are you thinking or chewing?
Thinking. I'm going through these, and I'm looking at the way that they were rated. And in most cases, to me, it makes sense, but in some, I was wondering if I can get some clarification. For example, the multimodal accommodation, can you explain to me what that is?
We were mostly looking at all the buses that come together. The Amtrak bus comes down by the Chamber Building, Clean Air Express, city buses already go by there. Bringing all those together in one spot, we really didn't have any other modes at the time, except that it's also close to 246th and Highway One, and so we bring that together.
So why did you believe the Laurel Avenue location was only a moderate-to-average multimodal accommodation location?
Probably because we don't have, the Amtrak bus doesn't go out there, Clean Air Express is not accommodated in that location, depending on how much parking can go there, and we don't know that yet. We'd have to take a look at that further.
Do you think that it's a possibility to get these other bus services to this Laurel location?
I couldn't make that determination. I haven't measured it out, and I don't know how many we could actually get in that area. We'd have to take a look at it instead of it.
Okay, because that sort of is, I guess, part of the reason why we're doing this in the first place, right? So that would really take, this location would take a big hit if you're not able to get all of those bus services to one location. So I feel like that's a really key piece of information for us to focus on before we go forward with this. The other thing was, I know that noise is a big concern there. Are there any mitigation measures such as a noise buffer wall or anything else that has been discussed for this location?
The only noise studies we done, we did are on the downtown location. The buses are, we replace buses every year, replace the oldest ones first, and they're getting quieter with the advent of newer buses. It could not be as much of an impact as some people think.
Okay, because I'm comparing it to, I know we've said we can't do this with the Chamber of Commerce, and what it's saying here is that it was actually rated lower than the Chamber of Commerce location, but without having done the noise study, where is that calcul— you know what I mean? I don't see how that was made.
Partially maybe because of the residential that's right there close to that area. There's no residential, well, there's
There is.
Minimal residential across the street from the one we're at, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Councilmember Lingel. The economic development catalyst or benefits to areas of blight under socioeconomic rating, Laurel is rated as moderate to average. That's a pretty blighted area. So I don't know why are we doing a moderate, you know, I, you know, so whatever. I mean, there is some subjective aspect to things like that, okay? And the total rating, so what I'm trying to say is that if there is some subjective aspects to this, I cannot just go by whatever the highest rating is, okay? I will make my own subjective, come into account and say, well, you know, I'd rather kind of fix the Laurel part because I find that that is pretty blighted. And I also see some potential benefits, like, you know, if there is any potential to explore rail again in this town, it would be nice to have a transit center nearby. The fiber optics, then, I think it's a good point that is being brought up. Nothing like this was really in this evaluation, unless I'm missing it, you know, as far as additional other modes of transportation. Now, Councilmember Costa brought up the issue that if we cannot accommodate all the buses there, then we're going back to square one, okay? And what do we do about that? Can we get an answer to that in some form?
Turn on your mic.
The Laurel Street design does accommodate all the buses, both sides, both the Clean Air Express and city buses and Amtrak.
I thought that that was Councilmember Costa's concern, so I guess there was a miscommunication and a misunderstanding. You're saying that it does accommodate all the buses that we are trying to accommodate?
Right, we just don't have, well, we have no authority over where Amtrak stops, so whether they would go there or not, we don't know.
Okay, so it's a question of jurisdiction. But we could ask them, can you stop here instead of there?
Sure.
And if they're sensible, they're going to say, yes, we want to go to a transit center, right? Right. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, I like, I still like the Laurel property for this. We've mentioned the possibility of sometime in the future, some rail, and immediately I'm thinking of the, up in Napa, the, Napa, the train going up through Napa, going through there. I mean, thinking out of the box, that would be something nice for our wine tours in this area. The fiber optics is a great point. So I would be, do we have the acreage of the Laurel site?
No, we don't.
Okay. Larger, smaller than the Cypress?
Looks larger, but.
Probably larger.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Councilmember Lingel. I noticed that under the primary site now considered, the description of the along E, Laurel Avenue between E Street and A Street, one of the disadvantages of the site were limited continuous sidewalk access. Is that simply because it would be an additional cost to the city? Because I think overall that would be an advantage to actually put in a sidewalk in that location, but was the disadvantage just going to be the cost of that?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Martin.
If the council is ready, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
I would like to.
The one disadvantage of the Laurel site that no one's pointed out is that at the downtown site, there's plenty of parking for the riders on Clean Air Express. That isn't necessarily the case on Laurel Street. There are two blank areas that we can study and figure out how many cars may park there, but it might not be enough. Yes, there's plenty of spaces for all the buses to pull in. I think we have 12 spaces marked out there. But we would need to be assured that we could fit the parking for the ridership on the Clean Air Express. So that will take some time, and we'd have to come back and say, does that work? Or do we want to put Clean Air Express someplace else? That's one item to consider.
We have the Little League fields there also that would be able to be used during the week for parking, right?
Yeah, there is a Little League park at A Street.
Right.
A bit away from it.
A, B, C.
Mr. Bean, why didn't we put the parking consideration as a criterion in the evaluation then?
I'm not sure of that.
Because it seems to be a pretty critical criteria, as far as I'm concerned, that we do have parking.
Well, the whole concept of the project began as a transfer center for our city buses.
Okay, and now it's moved to a transit center.
Similar to Mission Plaza, and then it grew. And the thought to put it downtown came from, that's where Clean Air Express already is, there's plenty of parking, that's why it scored well, and was thought to be great. Any of these others, we have to make the decision. Do we want to build a parking lot as well for all the riders of the Clean Air Express? It would become a bigger part of the project. We can do it, yes.
Okay, so you're talking about that the project has evolved into something different than what was first created.
Well, I think that when it was initially thought out, we wanted to accommodate all the buses, but the parking in all the other locations wasn't necessarily the first thought.
So would it be, wouldn't it make sense right now for us to say, we want you to look at this site, consider the parking, and come back to us and let us know if there is enough parking?
Of course.
But if that's the case, you come back and say, no, we're back to what, square one?
Well, we're back to looking for the best site in Lompoc to have a transit transfer center if you want Clean Air Express to be part of it.
Do we want Clean Air Express to be part of it? I say yes. I think we want a transit center with all our transit facilities.
Well, then, I think we should go back and see how many parking spaces we can come up on this site and give you the answer.
Okay.
And if it doesn't work, we should, I think we should probably start over and find, look at some of these sites that others have suggested tonight, and find the best spot.
Okay, so.
So I would ask you to tell us to work on the Laurel site. It sounds like a lot of you agree with that site for various reasons, and we'll come back and tell you if it works. If it doesn't, we'll ask you to tell us to look at some other places.
Okay.
Thank you.
So on that note, I would like to propose, I would like to make a motion that we do direct the staff to look at the Laurel site and come back to us with the feasibility whether it will work.
Second?
Thank you, Councilmember Lingel. My one question for staff is, I, sorry to interrupt the motion, was that I noticed on the Laurel Avenue location, you were correct in stating that there was spaces for 12 different buses. In the downtown, there is space for 10 buses. Is there a possibility of cutting this down by two bus lengths? I know that doesn't seem like much, but technically you'd cut it down, and then you could add parking, additional parking to both sides. Is that something that we can look into? Okay, well, I just don't want them to feel like they have to stick to this. Any, you know, I'm even thinking of the transit centers that I've been to, that the facility's actually on the street, all the buses actually parked behind, and that helps muffle that noise issue. That's how it is in downtown Los Angeles and in a few other places that I've been to. So I would just say, don't limit yourself to this initial drawing, but look at the site in general and the potential, the feasibility of the site in general. Thank you.
Did I have a second on this?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Let's vote. And that passes four, four zero with one abstention. Okay, we'll call the mayor back in. I'd like to thank the Brown Act for allowing me to have my cookies for dinner. Life is good. The item number eight is pulled at this time pending receipt from the FAA on documents, and we anticipate that we will have those documents on hand, and this item will be back on the September 20th agenda. And now item number nine, consideration of a commitment letter regarding State Water Resources Control Board's draft National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Phase Two Municipal Small Separators Storm Sewer Permit. Stacy.
Mr. Mayor, she is here. I'm sure she was unaware that item number eight was pulled, so she's probably on her way at this time.
In that case, everybody who didn't get to take the stretch break with me, feel free to stand up and get your stretch in. Yeah. Well, here you go. My last cookie for you.
Split?
Oh.
Oh, what is that?
This is a milk snicker.
Olives.
No.
Well, it's just.
I don't like olives.
Well, I see. You don't have a knife.
Yes, would you like a knife to cut it with?
Well, only if you have a knife.
I have an old one.
Where are those?
We fooled you, didn't we? Yeah, you didn't know we pulled that one. Okay. Proceed, please.
Thank you, councilmembers. I'm here tonight to recommend that you consider the draft comment letter on the State Water Resources Control Board's draft municipal small separate storm sewer permit. We've mentioned this before. This is a revision of an earlier draft that they did and a revision of an existing permit. The permit that they have proposed at this time, and this is the State Water Resources Control Board, is, we feel, after evaluating it, very focused on record-keeping and data-gathering, and doesn't seem to do very much in the way of improving water quality. It does put additional requirements on local businesses. It puts a lot of additional requirements on enforcement and tracking on city staff, and we feel that it would be extremely expensive to implement. It also requires water quality monitoring on a regular basis, which we don't currently have to do now. So as a result, we have recommended that you consider and approve the attached draft letter. And we have also attached, attachment A to that letter, which details each of the items which we object to, including a number of unfunded mandates, or items which we believe to be unfunded mandates. And we are asking the state either to fund those mandates or remove them from permit. And we are asking the state either to fund those mandates or remove them from the permit. I have handed you out a two-sheet addendum, which I'd like you to consider. I added one item at the end, which is a revision of, a proposed revision of the receiving water limitations section of the permit. And basically, the intent of that was to remove some of the very strict language, as far as liability goes, if you exceed one of their regulatory limits, and take it back to what the permit has always been about, which is maximum extent practicable. Practicable being able to be done. And also, the iterative process, where if it didn't work the first time, try it again, do something different, see if you can make it work. Those are things that have been in the permit since the beginning, and the language they're proposing now seems to take those out. So, this would be a proposal to put those critical features of the existing permit back in. So, with that, I will take any questions.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. First off, I want to say thank you for this great effort. I think it's wonderful when we stay on top of things like this, and we're responding right away, and I think that's wonderful. I also wanted to say thank you for adding that last paragraph where you actually give a recommendation. I think that's very key when you're talking to legislators. They don't just like hearing complaints, they like complaints. They like to hear what to do about them, so that was perfect. I do have a few questions, though. My first question is that on the first page of the staff report, as well as the first page of the draft letter, it's the last paragraph of the first page of the staff report, it says, "The new draft MS4 permit represents a sea change in the approach, S-E-A." I'm confused about what that means.
Okay. Sea change is a term that means a, like, 180-degree change in policy, in governmental policy in general. It's a relatively, it's a term that is more in use in the last year or so than it has been previously, but, and it is pretty commonly used now, but has not in the past.
Okay, that's possibly why. I've never actually heard it in that term. You know, if council's comfortable with leaving it that way, I'd prefer a different word, just because, I mean, quite frankly, I didn't know it, and maybe somebody else doesn't. But if they do, and I'm the one not in the know, that's understandable. The next question I have is, on page two of the letter, the, what would be the fourth paragraph down, starting, "As you are aware," I think that those are very, very general statements that whoever's reading this letter already knows. So, either I would attach numbers, hard statistical data, like you do in the rest of that paragraph and the preceding paragraph, or take that out. That's just a personal preference. I don't know if council members read through this letter. I think it's a great letter. I just think that, you know, high unemployment, property values, et cetera, et cetera, very general statements, and it's kind of common knowledge. But if we can put numbers along with that to show really how dire the situation is, that would be even better. I don't know if that's a possibility or not.
Just a point of clarification. If you could focus in on those sections which you feel are general?
It is just the first two sentences. "As you are aware, much of local government's funding comes from local property tax and sales taxes." You could break down maybe what the percentage is in Lompoc. With the economy down and high unemployment, what's the unemployment rate in the city of Lompoc, if you don't already state it, which you may have? "Property values in Lompoc have fallen, foreclosure rates have risen greatly, sales tax revenues are down, and many businesses have closed." I think that that happened, has happened in every city, so I just feel like, I feel like, in my experience with writing persuasive works, that's not persuasive to me, not enough. So, and I understand this is a dire situation, this is something we really need to convey to them, so I would attach numbers and data to these facts, or I would take them out. And lastly, do we know what the stance of the League of California Cities is on this issue, if they have one?
They have come out in, with a similar set of comments.
And have we, has it been brought to council, whether, were they requesting cities sign that letter at all?
No.
No, that was just as an organization? Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Lingel.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Lawson, you had mentioned that one of the requirements would be continuous monitoring of water quality. You thought that'd be very expensive. The public hearing this is going to say, well, we'd want you to monitor water quality, which we do. Would you let the public know how often we monitor it and the results?
Okay, let me actually differentiate water quality monitoring. We monitor the quality of the water in your water supply all the time. We monitor the quality of the water in the wastewater which is discharged into the river all the time. We have not yet, except on specific industrial permitted sites, had to monitor the water that is going down the gutter in the street. This is what this new regulation would require.
Thank you. And that's what, I think it's very important that the public realizes that we do monitor their water. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, we'll open the public comment. Thank you, Stacy. Seeing no one rise, we'll close public comment and bring, oop, come on down, Will.
Mayor and council, Will Schuyler, Lompoc. As you know, most of you there, this Clean Water Act, things, and Clean Air Act are completely out of control. They're, in my opinion, really starting to bury the country, so. But tonight, I would like to congratulate Ms. Lawson on her letter. I agree with it quite, quite a bit. I hope the people at home and those that are here tonight will get a chance to actually read this thing and see what it says. The farming, ranching communities pretty much against it. You have a stream running through your property, you're going to have to test the stream coming on to your property and off, and it's just, it's a nightmare. And one of the things I came away with when I was on the APCD board was that there's "back" and "best." "Back" means reasonable, or rack, is reasonable attainable. Well, Mr. Lynn, we would like you to put a little different muffler on your trucks to make them a little quieter. Get the most reasonable muffler that you can. The other is best available technology. Well, there's one made in Germany, and it's $30,000, and we want you to put it on your truck. And if anybody thinks I'm lying, you might check with the City of Lompoc Transportation and see what it costs to upgrade the trucks that the city did with these aftermarket gadgets. It's just, it says in here that business helps support you. This is a business killer. And when there's nobody left, then who are you going to get your money for? So, please, send this letter. I'd make it real short. I draw a long walk on a short pier. Thank you.
And is there anyone else who would like to speak on this? Maybe we get Sheldon to do that cartoon for us and attach it. Okay. Seeing no one else rise, we'll come back to council for discussion. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Thank you, Mr. Schuyler, for your comments. Again, overregulation at its finest. I mean, you know, get some more lawyers involved if we can. At least, that's what it feels like. So, I would actually move that, what is the actual, what is it? That council approved the attached draft comment letter to be sent to the state water resources control board with Mary Lynn's signature, noting my changes, my edits. Thank you.
Hand a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any clarification on the motion or any discussion? Seeing no lights lit, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. Thank you, Stacy. And now, we come to the first item of new business, number 10, the award of a contract to purchase three truck cab and chassis. And being a truck guy, I'm excited.
Good evening, Mary Lynn, members of the city council. Item 10 is for the purchase of three truck cabin chassis in the 50,000-pound weight rating class of trucks. The recommendation is to award the bid to Gibbs Truck Center of Oxnard, California, in the amount of $333,806. And to approve a supplemental appropriation of $181,869 into account, $73,000, $75,000. Two of these trucks are 20 years old, and while the lube vehicle is 11 years old, it was purchased, used, in 2000. The water and dump have been delayed for two budget cycles, and the lube was planned for replacement during the last budget cycle. A significant component of the additional cost of these vehicles comes from the California Air Resources Board's requirements for clean diesel equipment that has changed significantly over the last two decades. We believe that it's important to proceed now to keep efficient and reliable equipment available to our departments. Many of the vehicles in the city's fleet are larger and more purpose-built than typical business fleet. For some of these vehicles, the wear and tear on the cabin chassis is greater than that on the service body. By that, I mean, the cabin chassis for the water utility vehicle and the dump truck have become unserviceable, but the water tank body and the dump truck body are less worn and have additional service life. The lube truck body purchased used in 2000 due to the constant availability and requirements at the landfill is as unserviceable as the underlying chassis and the recommended for full replacement, although the two components are being bid separately. The fleet division has not typically requested the purchase of cabin chassis in the body separately. Historically, complete vehicles have been purchased as a unit. In the light of current economic climate and council direction to identify ways of extending city resources, this method was identified as a way to increase the working life of the needed vehicles in a manner that takes advantage of the existing assets that we have. The net savings for the water truck is estimated to be about $11,961, and the savings in the dump truck should be about $10,599 after installation costs. Getting the cabin chassis on order is important because of the extended 120-day lead time for delivery. There will be additional steps after delivery of the cabin chassis, including an additional solicitation for the body refurb process. There will be a separate solicitation for the lube body as it's being purchased separately and being mated with the cabin chassis once both parts are delivered. These vehicles are a part of the vehicle replacement fleet. Vehicles in the replacement fleet are assigned a vehicle life estimate and a replacement cost estimate at the time of their original purchase. However, it's almost impossible to articulate or to anticipate 20 years in advance the new requirements or the cost of engines that include particulate traps and the best available clean air technology. Fleet continually reviews the maintenance costs, vehicle use and age and hours and other metrics, in determining when a vehicle should actually be replaced. Sometimes, the vehicle history does not warrant replacement of the vehicle during the original estimated replacement cycle. There's a significant number of the replacement vehicle fleet's vehicles that remain in service beyond their original estimated replacement life. The estimated replacement costs for these three vehicles, as determined in 1990 for two of the vehicles and in 2000 for the third, were significantly lower than the amount estimated from the combination of the bid results and the estimated outfitting costs. For this reason, a supplemental appropriation of $181,869 is being requested to complete the purchase of these vehicles. Upon delivery, the three completed vehicles into the replacement fleet and the determination of the new estimated lives and estimated replacement costs, finance will utilize these new amounts in determining the 2013-2015 vehicle charge rates for the various departments that utilize fleet services. Finance is also planning on doing a complete review of the replacement fleet's estimated replacement values before the 2013-2015 budget cycle. And in conjunction with fleet services, adjust the estimated replacement amounts when necessary. At the time the solicitation was distributed, we send announcements seeking interest to 10 dealers around the state. The solicitation was announced in an email list of several thousand, published in the Lompoc Record and available for anybody to download from the city's website. We got calls, questions, and from nine dealers around the state. In the end, we received only one bid. The spreadsheet attached to the staff report shows the bid prices in the central column, totaling $333,806 for three chassis. The additional appropriation required to fully outfit and complete these three vehicles is $181,869, and it includes all required current best available technology equipment. To put the additional appropriation in context, had the full amount of the new vehicles been known 20 years ago, the additional appropriation equates to about $333 per month per vehicle. That will need to be accounted for beginning in the next budget cycle. That concludes my report, and I'm available for questions.
Ray, why would you think we got only one bid? Is it this is just a chassis, the specs aren't that tight on it?
The bid specifications said that we were replacing service bodies that were, came off of an international truck, and that the service bodies, after being refurbished, had to go on that exact type of cabin chassis with exactly the same measurements in order to, and we said that we'd evaluate others, but that was a condition of purchase and how we would have to do the evaluation.
Based on your experience, would you say that this price is on a parity with other brands of trucks that we might have been able to buy, had we not been making this change? Or was there a premium being paid for this? If you don't know the answer, you can say punt.
You know, it's, it's not clear to me, because trucks are, have gone through, just at this point, a hump, and the diesels have all had to have particulate catchers and special equipment that goes next to how they're housed in the garage, and this is, this is a really big change in all the vehicles that you can buy now. The ones that we're taking out of our fleet are not ones that can be sold in California anymore, and so, we're trying to get the best deal we can by sending them to other states or to, but, this is, this is a real sea change, maybe is the right word, in trucks. And so, I don't know that this is like a linear relationship or anything. It's something really new and now to be ordinary, and, and Lompoc isn't the only one that's having to do this. Everybody's having to take their 20-year-old vehicles, take them out of the fleet, and get them replaced with vehicles that can meet the new standards and carry refurbished bodies, if that's what we need to do.
Well, and that's actually a little worse than that, because given your fleet size, you might be taking vehicles as young as 2004 and either replacing the vehicle or putting on $16,000 worth of, with, worth of V A C T particulate traps.
Trenton is here, but I think we've gotten a significant number of them taken care of, and these are nearly the...
Yeah.
Instead of the fleet, and so...
You guys were, you guys were hit with it sooner than the private sector, and they're now, just now, getting to the end of it, you know, the end, the end of the extensions are running out, and they're, they're in it for next year. The one other thing is, I'm wondering if it would be possible to have Gibbs deliver these through their terminal in Nupomo rather than a terminal in Oxnard, which would put a little work up on...
I think Oxnard was the source of the bid, just because that's the bidding section in their company.
Yeah.
But we do deal with Gibbs out of Nupomo almost completely, and so, they provide us with parts and, and support, and so, I'll be surprised if it, but, the salesman actually, and the address that they put on the bid sheet when they submitted the bid said Oxnard, but we actually sent the bid documents to Nupomo, and so, it's internal to that company.
In the strongest way that we can, we need to ask that those trucks be delivered through the... through there so some of those dollars stick to this part of the world rather than sticking to Oxnard. And I don't know where we are in our relationship with regard to the bid, but I'm sure that Larry can tell you how we can do as much as possible. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. This may be a question for Management Services Director Brad Wilkie. What will be the balance of the account reserves in 72,000, 75,000?
That's the account where it will be appropriated from. What we are actually contemplating is that the reserves that are in the cash reserves that are in the fleet fund, which are approximately $1.8 million right now, would be drawn down by this dollar amount, this additional appropriation dollar amount to fund this. And then, in the 13-15 budget cycle, we will reevaluate the replacement costs and basically increase the rental rate for these three vehicles to bring back in the vehicle fleet over time, the dollar amount that we think will be necessary for the replacements of these three vehicles. So that it will be hitting the reserves in the fleet fund, but it's got about, it'd be about 10% of that, roughly.
Okay, thank you. And the other question I have is, I was a little bit concerned by one of the paragraphs on page one of the staff report. And I think it's only because we received one bid. So, we expect the method of removing and refurbishing the service body and only purchasing the chassis and cab to reduce the purchase cost, but how sure are we of that? And I'm curious why, and maybe we can't do this because maybe you can't pull out two requests for bids at the same time, but was there any way to look at what the cost of those three vehicles in full would have cost us in comparison?
Anthony Garcia got informal quotes from people that do that kind of refurbishment, remount work. And so, I think those are written quotes in his files so that he knows in advance where he's going with that, and he was the one that came up with the estimates. We did not do a formal bid for those things. We could have put out two bids at one time, that wouldn't have been a problem, but it was... I've been at other agencies where they use this separate method. When I worked for San Luis County, they used it for animal control vehicles, and the box on the back of those would last for the life of two or three cabin chassis. And so, it was a cost-effective way of making the investment in the body go for longer and be more effective.
Anthony, you have a couple of words to say?
Pardon?
Looks like Anthony's sneaking up behind you.
Yes. Mayor, City Council, I have some information I want to share with you. We did do a survey to see what a new vehicle would cost, new cabin chassis and new body. And for a water tank truck, $137,853. For a dump truck, $133,041. And for a service lube truck, $199,978. That's with new cabin chassis and body. What we wanted to do is see if we could save money by refurbishing the old bodies on the dump truck and the water tank truck. And the reason we chose International is because in kind, that's the same type of body that the vehicles are coming off of International, so they marry up well as far as mounting. There's also a secondary issue you need to be aware of. Along with the clean air emissions standards that have changed, the new compliance for 2010 clean air emissions standards, there's two technologies we can go with. One's called advanced EGR or exhaust gas recirculation, which reduces emissions in the incylinder. And the second option is called SCR, which is selective catalyst reduction. And it reduces emissions by adding an additional fluid called urea through the after-treatment system. And at this time, International is the only truck that offers the advanced EGR, meaning that we don't have to do anything to the vehicle. It's just, you just start it and drive it. And there's significant savings in doing that because itself regenerates while you're driving the vehicle. SCR, on the other hand, is it requires that you put a diesel fluid additive, urea, and you have a separate tank on the vehicle along with the diesel tank. And you've got to watch that really close because you can do damage if, and the vehicle just not work, and you can do some damage if you use urea, that SCR, the diesel fluid additive. So, we're trying the best we can to stay away from that technology and stay with self-regeneration. And International is the only truck on the market now that offers those engines. All the other ones, Cat, Cummings, they all offer the urea. It's old technology that's been used in Europe for about 30 years, and it's slowly making its way. And so, just to answer your question, the new compliance regs, 2010, those are the two choices we have to comply with clean air emissions.
And thank you. You did answer my question that purchasing all three trucks brand-new would be more expensive than how we're planning on doing it now, which is just purchasing the cabin chassis and refurbishing the bodies.
And refurbishing the old bodies, putting them back on Internationals.
Councilmember Starbuck?
So, this bid includes the refurbishment of the service bodies? Or is this just the trucks?
No, this is just for the cabin chassis.
So, we're going to deal with the service bodies later?
Right. We're going to go out for a competitive bid to refurbish the bodies.
So, it may cost as much as buying them new, huh?
No, no, because the price of metal on the world market, competitive market for metal, we're using our same chassis. We're just sandblasting them, put a high-quality primer and some good paint on them, and mount, remount them back on our new cabin chassis.
Having recently thought I had to become very knowledgeable about these technologies prior to selling the towing company, I can tell you with absolute certainty that you have made the right decision on which system to buy because the EGR system is miles ahead of the other technology.
Thank you, Mayor. And it was mentioned earlier that a few years ago, we did, in order to comply, we did a lot of particulate traps, the, where you plug in the type. And knowing that we're going to replace these, we did not do that to these, knowing that they're going to be replaced. And we had to be in compliance, either repower with a new engine or wait to just go ahead and replace it. So, we didn't put the particulate traps on these three vehicles.
Are there any questions at this time? Okay. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this? Okay, we're back to council. Are there any other questions? If not, I'd accept a motion. Councilmember Lingle.
I move that we accept staff recommendations.
And a second. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I sure hope that the refurbishment of the service bodies does not exceed $135,466. But I'm hearing that it's not going to exceed that amount, so we're going to end up saving this way, so I'll second.
And any further discussion? Seeing no lights, could we vote, please? That passes 5-0. And we have item 11, response to the 2010-2011 Santa Barbara County Civil Grand Jury. Brad?
Good evening again. Management Service Director Brad Wilkie, Mayor Councilmembers. In June, we received a response from the Santa Barbara County Grand Jury regarding their evaluation of countywide systems regarding employee benefits, primarily retirement, health care in retirement, and accrued leaves. The report that is in front of you is, was a product of several weeks of review of their report. And I took quite an amount of time to get it put together because I really appreciate the amount of time and effort that the grand jury put into this. Their effort, I believe, was to give the citizens of Santa Barbara County an overview of what is in the news all over California, which is retirement benefits, either pensions or otherwise. What I found in their review was that it was trying to put into one box what is applying to several dozen agencies. And one thing that I'd like to point out is that, as an example of why I think it doesn't really fit everybody's situation exactly, is that there is one comment, one finding, that asked for all the agencies to find ways to reduce their ongoing health care costs and specifically to address the fact that agencies do not fund or pre-fund their existing health care obligations. Well, in 2009, the city council approved the method that is being requested here, and that was three years ago. And we are currently pre-funding our retirement obligations, reducing our future expenses for those obligations, and have effectively done what they've asked for in previous years. A second item that really does not get brought up in the report is something that this council has just recently done with the three MOUs that were recently passed, which were to begin the process to have second tiers and pensions. One of the findings that they had in the report was to find ways to reduce ongoing pension costs. This council has already gone down that road by implementing or having staff begin the process of implementing second tiers for each of the bargaining groups. And again, this is something that we did before they made the recommendations to find ways to reduce costs, and we've already started doing that. And that was one of the things that brought to their attention was that that is something that we have done. I was able to do that because this report is due on September 16th, and I was able to get those agreements into this report, even though the report came out in June. So, not to minimize the amount of effort that the grand jury put into their recommendations or the amount of time that staff here put into the response, but those two items, I think, identify some of the particulars that I had put into this response that identify what's pertinent to the city of Landpoke rather than what is the general nature of health care and pension costs in the region as a whole. And I can certainly go into specifics, but if you have any questions about that, I won't go into those right now unless you do have specific questions.
Any questions at this time? Councilmember Starbuck?
I just have a quick comment. I felt like I was redoing the budget again when I read this, Brad. This was a very good report you did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this agenda item? Nope. Okay. Seeing no one rise, we'll come back. Yeah, Brad, I thought, let's see, how's that go? Dotted the i's and crossed the t's.
Well, the question from the grand jury didn't require a comprehensive review of what they said, but I think it was commensurate our part to let them know what our situation was rather than some generalities of how things are going, so.
Well, it's also nice to tell them, thanks for the advice, but we did that two years ago. So, Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Yes, thank you, Mr. Wilkie. I think you did a great job. You know, I think that this is an example where a lot of times you get a lot of hearsay and rumor, and then you have to actually go find the facts. And so, I understand why the grand jury would do it because I think that in other cities' cases, this may be true for us, as you're clearly stating, a lot of these things aren't in line with where the city of Landpoke is. So, I just want to say, great job. Thank you for that. And I move that the council review the Santa Barbara County... Oh, excuse me, we did that. That the city council approve the attached response letter presented on behalf of the city of Landpoke in pursuit of California Penal Code Section 933(c) and 933(a), b and c.
I second.
And it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no lights lit, could we vote, please? That passes 5-0. Thank you. And now, we have written communications. Are there any written communications? None? Okay. And we have oral communications, the last moment for those of you in the audience to have two minutes to talk to us about any subject. Seeing no one rise, we'll close that. And now, we have council development agency requests, comments, and meeting reports. No, we can do this. We'll do this, and then we'll go to closed session, and then we'll come back to the adjourn. We'll get our reports out first. Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you. Just an announcement. Ms. Martinor, or no, Ms. Milligan mentioned earlier, but I just want to remind the council that we do have tickets here for the Veterans' Recognition of their 75th Birthday, and I think the city would like to see all council members there, so tickets are available.
And Councilmember Costa? And by the way, I already bought mine, so you guys are up for it.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Really quickly, I wanted to mention that on Saturday, September 17th, the Library Foundation is having a dinner at the Grossman Gallery. It's a fundraiser. Tickets are $50 each, and that starts at 6:00 p.m., again, September 17th. And what I wanted to bring up actually was an email that I received, and I think that it was a good point. And that's the issue of the Santa Barbara County Ventners Association's festival leaving town after being here more than five years, five years or more. And I didn't know if the council was interested in formulating a letter to send to the association to show that we would like to keep it in Landpoke and that we were supportive of the organization and, you know, would do anything we can to really keep it here because I think it went so well this past year. I wanted to know if you were interested in that.
Actually, let me provide a little information on that. The Ventners Association Executive is a longtime customer of mine. He called me the other day and said, "Well, the newspaper made me the bad guy." And I said, "No, no, I understand." Last, the way that the festival is set up is it's supposed to rotate between the San Inez Valley and the Landpoke Valley each year. Last year, it was actually supposed to be in the San Inez Valley, but there was an issue with the venue fairly late in the planning process, and they came to the city of Landpoke and said, "Hey, can we have the park again?" And we, of course, jumped on it, and all things were good. This year, because last year was moved, there was tremendous pressure by the Ventners over the hill to have their fair share of it. So, it had been intended to be there last year, and it had been intended to be there this year. So, we didn't lose it. They just got there. We actually got an extra turn at bat, and they're still dealing with issues with the proposed site, so we might get another turn at bat again on top of that. And he and I have been playing phone tag for a couple of days, but I know from the voicemail I got that it has nothing to do with us and it has only to do with the rotation of it, which we had discussed before. Councilmember Martinor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to comment on the Ventners event. I volunteered for that event, and I've been in contact and I have talked candidly with the executive director regarding this. And there is more to it than that. There is the fact that San Inez does not have a venue that is large enough, so they find themselves having to come back to Landpoke. However, they do have a lot of complaints about Landpoke from visitors, and it has to do with, it looks horrible, and, you know, it's tacky, whatever. So, they are in this constant struggle all the time, looking for another venue. And the minute San Inez comes up with a venue that is large enough, it's going to be gone, and it's going to be gone forever. So, I think we need to make a constant, you know, effort to bring it back to Landpoke and to make it look good. So, a letter will be good. Also, the executive director has noted many times that actually most of the volunteers, over 50% of the volunteers are actually Landpoke residents. So, they do feel that if they go somewhere else, they might actually lose a fair pool of their volunteers. So, we do have leverage. I don't think it's a question of just rotation. We do have leverage. If we want this event to be here, we can... If we want this event to be here, we can do something about it. A letter is a good thing. Making the park look better is even a better thing. And do an actual, you know, promotion of the site. So, I think that we should look into a letter.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Yeah, I wanted to respond to that as well, just simply because I know it was here in 2007, and I know that oddly enough because there's a poster up in Full of Life Flatbread, which is a restaurant in Los Alamos. And so, that doesn't—because it would have been '07, '09, oh, 2011. So, if that was an off year, then 2007 would have been an off year. So, I understand that that may have been the original concept, but it doesn't sound like that's been the trend. So, I still would agree that we try to keep them here whether or not they think that they should go to San Ynez. Thank you.
Councilmember Lingle?
You know, I think a letter is the minimum thing we should do. I agree. Do whatever we can to, if not get them back this year, let them know that we are definitely interested, and yes, of course, you know, continue to work on cleaning up that park. I didn't hear that they considered the place to look terrible. I heard very positive things there. It was a traffic problem the first year. We resolved that. The first year, we had the entire field planted in flowers. That was—it was a gorgeous year, that year. Last year, I don't—I think we had maybe one or two of the portions of the field, but yes, we can still make some big improvements in that park. But a letter is, I think, the minimum we can do to get them back here.
I'd be delighted to send them a letter.
Do we need to agendize that?
I have heard you, and I will see to it, absolutely. And I will continue to communicate with them on an individual basis as I have in the past. Anyone else have anything else they need to report? I. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I just wanted to check really quickly. The next meeting, I will be in San Francisco, and I wanted to see if we had any—any headway, made any headway on the video conferencing idea?
Councilmember Costa, mayor and council, I've been advised that the technology will support the video conferencing, as you requested last meeting, and would, as I understand, would support both of you for whatever your choices, Councilmember Martner.
I think telephone is fine.
Okay, fine.
Thank you.
Anything—Councilmember Starbuck?
I was just curious, how big are you going to make Ashley? That was the big concern last time.
Oh, my. Okay. We will be returning to closed session, and if you guys just don't have anything better to do, you can welcome to sit here, and we will come in back in and report out. Or you can go home and turn on the TV, and you can see us report out when we get done.
Mr. Mayor, is it possible that it's going to be after 11:00? We're going to finish this closed session? If so, I would suggest you make a motion to go an extra half hour or something.
I think that would be very reasonable considering it's the time. So, I'd accept an emotion to extend the meeting. Councilmember Lingle?
I move that we extend the meeting for up to one hour.
And a second.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to extend the meeting up to one hour. Could we vote, please? And that passes five-zero. All right, let's go back to the conference room.